I'll call the meeting to order and we'll stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, first up, we will approve the consent agenda unless there are additions, changes, or questions. On that consent agenda are the minutes from the council meeting on July 15th, the community center commission meeting on July 14th, the EDA meeting on July 14th, telecom commission on July 21st. There is also an amplification permit submitted by Katie Wem for September 4th, an exempt gambling permit from Wyndham Area Youth Football League for October 24th, and the regular bills. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda. I'll second that.
Motion made by Scott, second by Jason. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up is a resolution of appreciation for Terry Glidden. And here we've got a resolution expressing sincere appreciation to Terry Glidden for honorable and devoted public service to the city of Wyndham, Minnesota. Whereas the city of Wyndham wishes to express grateful recognition and appreciation to Terry Glidden for his untiring and valuable service faithfully rendered to the city of Wyndham commencing on July 7th, 1997 through July 18th, 2025. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of Wyndham, Minnesota as follows. The city council on behalf of its members, city officials, employees of the city of Wyndham, and the citizens of this community extends to Terry Glidden its expressions of appreciation for serving the city well and its best wishes for the years to come. That a copy of this resolution be incorporated in the official records of the city council of the city of Wyndham and a copy presented to Terry Glidden adopted on this fifth day of August 2025. So with that.
I'll make a motion to accept the appreciation for Terry Glidden.
I'll second. The motion to introduce the resolution was made by Scott, second by Jenny. Any further discussion?
Just want to say thank you for Terry, for all the hard work he's done here for the city and the public of Wyndham and our cable system and our media system for the lack in hours or the hours that they have all put in to put that together and make it work and whether we're all in favor for it or dislike it. But he did. He's been in there for the long haul from almost day one of that to get it going to where it is today. Appreciate all the hard work all of our staff doing here in Wyndham. Thank you.
And with that, we'll have a roll call.
Nelson.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
S1.
Yes.
All right, thank you Terry for the years of service. Much appreciated. Next up, are there any department heads that would like to speak? Nobody? Okay. Next on the agenda, we've got the 2024 City of Wyndham Audit Presentation, and we've got Craig Popenhagen and Sterling Shattuck here to present that. Welcome gentlemen.
All right, there we go. Oh yeah. Well, auditors would love to talk tonight. So thank you. Thank you for having us. It was about five years ago, the last time I was here, so appreciate appreciate being re-engaged and working with all of your team and being here tonight, so. We've got booklets in front of you. I'm just gonna focus on, I guess we'll give you the picture show here in the highlights. I won't make you read all 125 pages here tonight, and I'm not gonna flip through all 125 pages either, so. We'll just jump right in to the presentation here. So I'm Craig Popenhagen. Worked on your audit five years ago. Responsible for signing your audit statements and approving their release here. So with me Sterling Shattuck. Sterling worked on the audit, so if you want to know how, you know, how did, a part of how we got the work done, it's sitting next to me here, so. Thank you Sterling. You know, the one thing that kind of kind of jumped out to me though is just how much is, you know, going on here in the city of Wyndham. And the last couple of years for you have been a little bit eventful, so. Quite a few things that kind of, we'll highlight kind of as we go through the charts and the graphs, so. First, we'll start with the audit results. So clean opinion on the financials. So you want to see that unmodified is kind of the technical term in audit language, but clean opinion, so basically we're comfortable that all the numbers and everything are presented correctly in all material respects with accounting standards. Couple internal control comments. I think these are familiar. Pretty normal. So the financial statement preparation. You know, primarily Donna leads the charge on taking care of the numbers, and then we add about 115 pages of disclosures that go with that. So that's the one finding that's very normal with the clients that we work with, so. Nothing to be alarmed about there. We had some journal entries. Again, a lot of things going on here. In the last couple of years, we had some journal entries there. Some of the normal journal entries though, like the pension entries. Making those entries for kind of the city of Wyndham's slice of the state of Minnesota's overall. Unfunded pension liability. If, I always say if you like puzzles, you'd love putting those numbers together, but that is, that's something that basically you're kind of waiting for the state to release their reports and then you start drilling down from there. So what does, what needs to be adjusted on the city's financials, so. That's kind of a normal outcome of the auditor, byproduct of the audit as well. Legal compliance, what we're referring to there is statutory compliance. So when we test through about, you know, if you printed them out, about 100 pages worth of work programs that the state auditor's office updates on an annual basis. We have to test through those for compliance with certain statutes, not all statutes, but certain of them. Quite a few still, and to come out with no findings there, that's a good result. So that's kind of the, you know, that's another way to look at it, is that's kind of the day-to-day stuff, right? Statutory compliance is what you, what you live on a daily basis, so. That's where you, you know, ideally want to have pretty clean, clean results there, so. Governance communication, so a few things that we have to talk about are just publishing a letter to all oversight boards, city councils, anybody that is taking responsibility or accepting the results of the audit. So we did have a change in accounting standards this year around recording compensated absences. This is a liability and that the liability, kind of how you measure it, was changed in the accounting standard, so we kind of had to relook at that for the 2024 audit, so kind of think of it as things like comp time, PTO, vacation, sick leave, those kind of things, so accruing a liability for those. We did have a past adjustment on those as well. Because with the, usually with accounting standards that impact measurement, you're supposed to go back to, well, what was it not only at the year that we're auditing, but what was it at the end of the year before we were auditing? So recast it. In a perfect world, you'd recast the 2023 financials. Looking at the, the impact of the adjustments, we're like, you know, it's not worth going back and recasting 2023. So the impact was recorded in 2024 and, you know, life goes on, so. No really high-risk estimates. There's always estimates involved in any financial statements, but none that were, that we considered to be higher risk, so. Yeah, the pension entry is, is a significant estimate, but at the same time, it's not really any estimate that you can impact through your own decisions or anything. It's, we're waiting for information to come from the state first, and then we book the, the impact to the city of Wyndham, so. A couple fund balances that are in a, you know, a deficit position that we had to point out under accounting standards, but the 2025 Street Capital Projects Fund. So when bonding money comes in for that, that'll make that fund flush. As with any construction project, you have engineering costs and upfront kind of costs before you even do the bonding, so. Telecom Fund, we know about that one. Largely, it's related to assets that depreciate kind of, what do I want to say? Technology-based assets that depreciated at a faster rate than the bonds pay off. That's same as, you know, business as usual there, kind of. And then River Bluff Townhomes, so we just have to point those out. You know, usually the reason we have to point those out is, you know, sometimes the only avenue you have to make them zero or positive is through funding from the general fund. But that's not, that's not really the case here. That's not what you're intending to do either, so. Next, let's see, we kind of talked through that already. I think we can keep on rolling, so. Start the picture show here, some charts and graphs, so we kind of trended out a five-year trend line here, so. A few of these are gonna, you'll see some of these same patterns show up in other slides, but starting with the general fund. Just trending out revenues and expenses. So revenues being the dark blue line, expenses being the light blue line. And then fund balance, unassigned fund balance being kind of the green shaded line there. So the thing that, you know, the eventful couple of years that you had was with the pork plant closure and some of the things that were in process around that. So you received some, a large grant from DED, the Department of Employment and Economic Development in '23 and '24. That was the increase in the dark blue bar, the revenues coming in. So some of that was for the plant, you know, kind of closure itself or reconstruction, and then also the Wyndham apartments. So that was more the 2024 activity. So a significant amount was given out for Wyndham Apartments as a loan, but then also a decent amount is grant funding as well. So the reason you don't see the expenses jump the way the revenues did is because of the loan that was given out. So you'll recollect that, the loan over time. But otherwise, your fund balance stayed pretty, pretty consistent. Looking at kind of trending out a five-year trend on all governmental funds here. So this includes like your capital projects fund, your EDA, debt service funds, things like that. So we've got kind of left to right taxes, tax increments, special assessments, licenses, intergovernmental, charges for services, interest and other. So those are kind of the main categories here. The one that really stands out again is intergovernmental revenue. That's the one in the middle that has the spikes as well in '23 and '24 for the same reason that we just talked about with the DED grant that came in. On the expenditure side, for the most part, your expenditures are pretty consistent other than economic development and your capital outlay, so. 2020 capital outlay was a dark blue bar, the tallest one there, that was street projects. Economic development was money flowing through related to the pork plant and then also Wyndham Apartments. So otherwise, you're pretty stable. Electric fund, so trending out, kind of similar to what we did with the general fund, just trending out. What are the operating revenues? What are the operating expenses? And then what is our net, you know, gain or loss? So the main thing here, again, with the pork plant not being operating, starting halfway through 2023, of course, volume was down, so less kilowatt-hours taken means less kilowatt-hours collected in revenues and also cost of power was down as well. So you kind of see a level decrease in revenues and expenses, still maintaining a positive net margin. Water fund operations, kind of much the same, just less gallons sold, but still stable and slightly positive throughout all five years for the positive bottom line. Sewer fund is much the same. So you see that there, you know, you've done, over the, over those years, you've done put into place some rate increases. So some of the rate increases offset some of the volume decreases in electric sewer and water. Telecom is showing positive operating income and then a positive change in operations as well, so positive bottom line for five years in the telecom fund. We talked about it being in a deficit position overall from an equity standpoint, but still, you know, you're adding to the bottom line and kind of closing the gap. So it's in less of a deficit position, I think now than it was, you know, five years ago when the last time we looked at it, so. And it is generating positive cash flow. Liquor store is stable, doing exactly what you intended to do, which is provide unrestricted funds to be used in other areas of the city. So typically, you've transferred out whatever the positive bottom line was, transferred it out, you know, generally to the general fund for other uses, so. Rather than building equity or fund balance in the liquor store itself. So it's doing exactly what you want it to do. The arena fund, these next couple are a little bit different, so. Here you see like your operating revenues is the dark blue bar and the light blue bar is your operating expenses. So you see like operations, you're bringing in less revenue than what you have expenses for. So from an operating standpoint, the arena fund doesn't fund itself or carry its own operations without help. And that's what happens then is tax levy revenues come in, what we call below the line or in the non-operating area to make the fund whole. Similar thing happening with multipurpose center, same type of scenario. So absent help from the tax levy, multipurpose center also would not be self-supporting. So then long-term debt, this is not including the hospital, so this is just strictly looking at the debt of the city itself. So what you see is, you know, you've done some bond issuances in GO bonds, both in '23 and '24. So there's the electric generation building, construction, street projects. Liquor story model was a recent one as well. So you've issued some bonds in the last two years. In total, kind of the downward slump means you've paid down, you're paying your debt down, so. Taking care of scheduled bond payments. Look at, just kind of close things out here with just another little bit of a look at general fund, so. General fund being the main operating fund for the city. Whereas we started looking at revenues and expenses, now we're looking at just fund balance, like what do you have for financial resources that carry forward into 2025 and future years, right? So you can kind of see over the five years, your unassigned fund balance stays pretty stable. 2.5 million, maybe about up to about 2.7, so that stays pretty stable. We compare that, then the next slide, we kind of compare that or correlate that with expenses, so. This is often kind of a comparison that's done is where did the general fund end up for fund balance? What do you have for resources going forward? And how does that compare to like your annual operating expenses? How much of your expenses can you, are you carrying in fund balance? So whereas the, the numbers itself for the unassigned fund balance were pretty stable. On the previous slide, your expenses are higher, and the reason they're higher in the last two years especially is because you have the DED grant money flowing through the general fund and going out. So that's the only reason that as a percentage basis, the percentages went down. Whereas in total, in real dollars, it's pretty stable. The next slide is just looking at where does the funding come from for the general fund, so. For 2024, $11.2 million intergovernmental, a little bit over 80%. Again, because of that DED funding largely made up a bigger slice of the pie relative to your other revenue sources, so. So that, the DED grant was what, $13 million over three years now, because it's not done yet. So you'll have some still in 2025. Expenses, let's see, oh, sorry, other governmental funds revenue, so looking at total governmental revenue for the city. Same thing happening here as in the previous slide with the DED grant. 13.5 million in total governmental fund revenues for 2024. Kind of compare that, then we can kind of look at the taxing impact or the tax effect here. So property taxes make up about 20% of total general governmental fund revenues coming into the city. So how does that compare then to what's our property tax levy look like per capita? So pretty, pretty steady, you know, so between 495 to 523, $530, say, on a per capita basis. What I'll point out here is the first three years here, left to right. That is some stats, or we pull those from the state auditor's office. So what happens is like all of the cities you included, report your audit results to the state auditor's office. They'll accumulate those results and do some comparisons such as this based on your population. So they'll say, well, what's your property tax revenue per person? They'll just divide it by your population and give us these stats. The only thing is, you know, they're running behind themselves as far as accumulating the statistics. So '23 and '24, you know, basically we recomputed based on the audited statements and what, you know, we know your population to be at that time, but that could change a little bit as, you know, numbers get aggregated at the state level and republished back, but pretty stable. The main point being your rank is about, so there's say 230 cities in the state over 2,500 in population. You're about right smack in the middle as far as your tax levy per capita. So if you were to draw a bell curve, you'd be pretty much right in the middle. So half of having a higher tax rate per capita, half of the cities having a lower tax rate, basically, so. Looking at expenses, a little bit more stability here, but so again, total expenses going out for the general fund, about $5 million. So this, you know, you brought in more DED grant revenues because some of that, rather than just being passed through as a grant expense, were passed through as a loan receivable, so you'll recollect some of those over time. Capital outlay here was about 26%. So some of the things that impacted capital outlay, flood cleanup was a chunk, street project, you know, ambulance purchases, things like that. And then similar on the next slide, all governmental funds, kind of the same thing happening here. This was in total $7.3 million, but capital outlay is the one area that kind of was affected by things specific to 2024. That's my last slide, so. If there's questions, certainly, or other topics for discussion, we can certainly entertain that, but that's my, end of my prepared remarks and thank you for your time.
And we have any questions?
For a nutshell, we're setting pretty good from what you can see then, as far as what we own, what we need to bring into, type of.
Yep, so yeah, you know, especially like your general fund is healthy. Sitting in a healthy, you know, position overall.
Does anyone else have any questions, comments?
I do, I do appreciate you explaining it so well. Thank you.
Try to keep it simple. Thank you.
Do appreciate you guys going through this and making it, you know, making it how we do and with Donna's help and all you guys helping each other out, because without you guys, we'd look pretty bad. But thank you guys. Thank you very much.
No, you're welcome. We're just the messenger, right?
Thank you very much, guys, and thank you Donna for all your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'd make a motion to accept the re, the financial statement audit.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Jason, second by Dennis. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Right, next up is discussion on 2025 Island Park berm grading project. There was a memo in the packet, and Steve, I'll hand this over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. The memo in the packet, there's just a little bit of history there. You know, this project started at the end of 2024 after the flood we had last year. And the discussion was to build a berm through Island Park to help mitigate some of the flooding effects. The council earlier this spring decided to go ahead with the design of that berm. And those specifications and drawings were completed by DGR. The project went out for bid. We got five bids in. The engineer's estimate was about $415,000. This includes a pad that's necessary to build the Island Park shelter. As you know, that shelter was taken down earlier in the year. We've been waiting to rebuild the new shelter there. The new shelter obviously has to comply with floodplain rules, so that pad was gonna need to be built up anyway. So we just incorporated it into the berm, because it made more sense to do it as one larger project. That ended up saving us probably about $15,000. Our original estimate for the pad was around 40, and the bid came in at 27 and changed, so. So this bid includes, the one is the berm, and the second alternate piece of it is that pad for the shelter. As noted in here, discussion had, when it was originally taken, was we want to do the project, we'll figure out how to fund it when we get to that point. And part of that discussion was because we had the sales tax, local option sales tax ballot question on the agenda, or on the ballot for November of 2024. And that hadn't been decided when, at the time that the council voted to move this project ahead. We now obviously know the result of that, which was that that was defeated by 12 votes. So here we are looking at how do you want to fund the project? And so this 300 is about 330,000, I'm just rounding. And so this three hundred is about three hundred and thirty thousand, I'm just rounding um, dollars for this project. As I stated in the memo, um, like with the uh, twenty twenty-five street project, uh, it's not big enough essentially to bond on its own just for um, bond issuance costs, those types of things. And so what we did with the street project is we're going to fund that upfront from our internal resources. And then if we do a street project in twenty twenty-six, we're gonna roll that project in together with that and then save on those bonding costs. And so the approach that I'm recommending to the council with the berm is if you decide that you wanna move ahead with that project is to use our uh, reserve dollars, uh, the auditors are just ho- here and told us we have fifty-three percent in our reserves. Um, our policy is thirty-five to sixty. Um, this would, if we fund the berm project, that three hundred and thirty thousand is about seven or eight percent. So we'd go from fifty-three down to the probably the mid forties, mid-high forties. So we have the ability to fund this project. And then there's also a resolution in here, if you decide to move ahead, um, would be the intent to reimburse ourselves. And so then again, with like the street project, that would give us the option to roll this berm funding in with a general obligation bond next year if we decide to do that. Um, it preserves flexibility, doesn't mean you have to do it, but it preserves flexibility. If we don't do the resolution at this point, uh, we then lose that flexibility, so. Um, suggesting if you want to move ahead, that we also pass the resolution um, to reimburse ourself in the future. And that council, then you can make that decision next year, um, depending on what we decide to do for street project. So it's kind of in a nutshell about the funding on this. Um, I don't know if anybody had any questions on that or any other thoughts. Um, one of the other things we were hoping to have known by now um, was, you know, getting those FEMA dollars back and having our reimbursements. Cause you know, we had to pay staff and, you know, have other expenses as far as operational. Um, we're still working through that process, we've got, started to get some dollars back. Um, but we've got a fairly large um, payment, um, a little bit over, oh, Donna's gone. It's a little bit over four hundred thousand dollars that we're waiting on from FEMA. Um, that includes the um, uh, the debris drop-off site that we had at the school, so that's paying landfill and all that kind of stuff. And so it's a fairly large piece, we're hoping to have had that in by now, um, so that we could have those dollars also sitting in our account. Um, but we haven't gotten that yet. Uh, with the change in administration, we understand that there's a lot more process, shall we say, at FEMA right now. So payments are moving relatively slowly. So we've seen a few smaller ones come in, but uh, we did talk with FEMA and they, and they're fairly confident. They said it's kind of in its last stages in DC to get approval, so we're hoping that will come through fairly soon, but um, that should, again, that'll go back into our coffer, so that will help us in our general fund reserve balance, so. So I'm confident that if you should, again, if you decide to do this, we can fund this internally and, and move forward.
Let's see, we, we go ahead and uh, say we're gonna do it and can we again, apply for that one percent? From the vote again from our, what we, what we missed for twelve.
Sure, that local option sales tax, so the, the Minnesota legislature controls that process. And so that would be something, you know, next year you could go and ask. Um, it does have to be at a general election and they are changing the rules for that kind of each session. They had a moratorium last year, but we decided to press on with it anyway, um, which would have been a bit of a legislative challenge. Um, you still always have that option to do that. Um, but whether or not that would pass or you want to include this project or some other projects, cause there's other flood mitigation projects you talked with, but yes, you still have that flexibility.
As far as the tax we're going through on the ballot, uh, are there any loopholes anywhere?
As I, as I mentioned, th- they're changing the rules ea- each session. So um, you know, they want this legislature, they want it to be a regional project. Um, they've told, shut some cities down that wanted to use it for water sewer, things like that. They've told them, no, that's not a regional project, they'd like to see like um, ball fields or a theater, an amphitheater, a community center, something that's going to draw and be a regional asset. That's what the legislature wants to see. So we would have a bit of an uphill battle with them, um, cause they are still retaining the final authority to either approve every local option sales tax or not. And so it's gone through the durations, before you had to get voter approval, then it went to legislature. Then it was now you have to have legislative approval, then you can go to the voters. And again, we were doing ours kind of backwards, but we thought we had a good story with the flooding and all that, and so. Um, but if you so choose to want to do that, we would need to approach the legislature this year in January and submit a request to do a local option sales tax if you so choose to.
When we go to the street department, does that mean they're gonna have to work, walk to the where, to their next job they have with the pick and shovel? Or they'll, they'll, will there still be money for them to do what they have to do? I mean, the things that absolutely have to be done.
For what, of, with, I mean, we're, streets are funded out of our general fund and not, not out of uh, the reserve or whatnot. So yeah, that's an annual operational cost.
Could we take that sales protect and put it towards a pool if we go that route?
Again, that would be a discussion to have with our legislators when the time comes.
Well, then I'll say go out, uh, how do I want to put it? Making a men- or a motion to accept the Island Park berm project?
So the, the next, uh, the action actually would be on the next piece. You've got a letter in your packet from DGR Engineering. Um, they are recommending that if the council chooses to move ahead, that the bid would be awarded to Mathewitz Construction in the amount of thirty, three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and forty-three cents. Um, and then the, excuse me, then the resolution is in there, shows all the, the bids um, that we would receive for the project. And then there's also the, um, I think there was a bid tabulation in her someplace, wasn't there? Maybe not, so.
So if we're gonna use the reserve fund to fund this and everyone's good with that, then we need a resolution to award the bid.
Correct.
And then we need a resolution to declare intent to reimburse from the bond proceeds, so we have that flexibility should we decide to use that in the future.
Correct. Correct, Mayor.
Okay. So does anyone else have any questions or comments on the funding discussion?
I guess the only thing I think is budget coming up and we'll be okay as far as everything, because it's not too far off now for the.
Right, and so again, we always have that discussion at budget time, you know, we're just starting to collect that information. Um, typically, we haven't used a lot out of the reserve fund to fund operations. Uh, we have used a hundred thousand, I believe, council member Quaid's been on long enough and Jason, I think you were on before. Um, when we dipped into that to smooth out our levy a little bit, um, we would still have that flexibility as um, if we used the three hundred and thirty thousand, we'd go from about fifty-three percent to about forty-five, forty-six percent general fund um, coverage and our policy is thirty-five to seven, or thirty-five to sixty. So you would still have some latitude in there to use a hundred thousand or two hundred thousand really without impacting our ability to self-fund or to cover our expenses.
We can't take it out of that five hundred thousand, can we? With the electric department, I mean, they're not getting it all at once, but the electric department's gonna have.
What money is electric department getting?
For selling the, to Kaso- Kasoon or whatever, they sold their rights to what?
I guess I.
We just did it last three weeks ago.
Oh, no, 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 I mean, to the Kassen, we just assigned them contracts. Yeah, it, it, we're not selling them an asset, we're not getting five hundred thousand dollars. We're lowering our contracted power purchases, they're accepting those on. So it's really, it's not a sale of an asset, so no, we don't, there's no income there.
Good effort, Jim. So if we, I mean, if nobody has any further questions or discussions, it sounds legit to use the reserve funds, it seems like it's all within parameters. Um, then we'll, are probably next looking for a resolution to award the bid to Mathewitz Construction.
I'll make that resolution to, for the berm for Mathewitz Construction for the amount of what Steve said.
Two hundred and, two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars and forty-three cents. And then I'm assuming you want to also take the alternate um, for the pu- Island Park Shelter pad? And that's twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars?
Yes.
I'll second that, to include the pad.
The resolution has been introduced by Scott and seconded by Jim to um, award the bid to Mathewitz Construction for the project bid and the alternate to include the pad. Is there any other further discussion? All right, roll call.
Sherman.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes.
Espen.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
All right, so as that has gone through, then next we will be looking for a resolution declaring intent, declaring the official intent of City of Wyndham to reimburse certain expenditures from the proceeds of bonds to be issued by the city as discussed by Steve previously.
I would introduce a resolution.
I'll second that.
Resolution is introduced by Jenny and second by Dennis, is there any other discussion? All right, roll call.
Yes.
I think it's off Benson, E- Espen.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
All right. Next up, we have a resolution calling for a public hearing for residential tax abatement at nineteen fifty-five Bud Road. Um, do you want to talk about this or no? No pressure.
Did I, did I not have it on? Sorry, Sonia Wilt, EDA Director. Um, before you have a resolution to set a public hearing for a residential property tax abatement, um, just standard procedure. This um, the, the county and, and school have also set a hearing as well. Um, the date of the hearing we're looking at is August nineteenth at your regular meeting. This is for property located at nineteen fifty-five Bud Road. Um, estimated market value of the home at this point is two hundred and ten thousand. Would it be approximately thirteen twenty-nine oh seven per year and over the five-year abatement, about sixty-six forty-five? And all you're, all you're looking to do is that, that public hearing tonight.
I'll make a resolution to accept a public hearing for Bud Drive, what, nineteen fifty-five Bud Road abatement?
I'll second.
The resolution has been introduced by Scott and seconded by Jenny, calling for a public hearing for residential tax pa- abatement at nineteen fifty-five Bud Road. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Espen.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Sherman.
Epstein.
Thank you, Sonia. All right, um, next up, sorry, I gotta get there here. Is the ordinance number two oh one, second series, the study in the moratorium of the conditional use permit applications for billboards. So this is the second reading. Um, staff is recommending that the city council take the following actions to approve by motion the second reading of ordinance number two oh one, second series, authorizing a study and imposing a moratorium on acceptance of conditional use permits, permit applications for billboards as recommended by the planning commission and approved by the city attorney. Uh, so we need two separate motions, right?
That is correct, Mayor.
Okay, so this is, if anyone has any questions about that or will take a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance number two oh one, second series.
I'll make a motion to accept the ordinance for two oh one, second series.
Second.
Is made by Scott and second by Jason, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The next staff recommended action is to approve by motion the proposed title and summary for ordinance number two oh one, second series for publication in lieu of publishing the entire ordinance by at least a four-fifth vote of the council. Are there any questions or comments on any of that? All right, if someone would like to introduce that motion?
I'll make the ordinance, motion to accept the title and summary for number two oh one, second series.
I'll second.
Motion made by Scott, second by Jenny, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up, does anyone have anything for new business? Steve, I'm sorry, I was not looking that way yet.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Steve.
Just wanted to uh, note that we got the FEMA determination letter for the pool. I sent that out to the council members, uh, that came Monday. Um, FEMA is denying our request for funding for the pool. Um, their rationale is essentially is that it was at the end of its economic life and that we couldn't really prove what the pre-existing condition was and that it was impacted by the post um, flood conditions. Um, the city does have an appeal window of about sixty days. Um, but we'll have an agenda item at the Jan- or at the August fifteenth consult to kind of talk about it. Um, the thought I had had uh, was we'll talk with our Burbach engineers who had done the uh, pool study for us and our civil engineers from DGR, have them take a look at that FEMA letter and see if there's something that they feel is in there that we could hang our hat on as far as making an appeal. And then also find out from them if that's something they would do either on, or for, you know, for additional work or if there's gonna be a cost to it and be able to give that back to you at the next meeting, so. But I wanted you to be aware of it, as soon as we got that letter, we've been waiting for it, it finally came. It was not the news we were hoping for. Um, just using round numbers, uh, about three hundred thousand of damage that they would cover in it. Um, but as far as the vest, pool vessel, the shell and whatnot itself, um, they would not cover. And that was a little over two million on that piece, so. We had been hopeful that we would get the coverage on the pool vessel plus that uh, three hundred thousand for the equipment and whatnot, but that was not the determination, so. Um, not very good news for us on that front, but um, at least now we know what, what we're dealing with, so. Um, but like I said, we'll have an agenda item on the next meeting and have some more information for you. But I did want you, you know, I sent you that and I wanted to get that out, cause people are asking and curious, so. That's what we know. And then I'll also have the opportunity to go to park and wreck before your next meeting, so.
Thank you, Steve. Anyone else with new business? Old business, we've got city council meeting August twelfth, twenty twenty-five for the facility tour completion and that was a reschedule from our July twenty-ninth. Um, so if that still works for everyone?
Fi- five o'clock.
Okay.
And the pool is one of the items on the agenda, so you'll get to see it firsthand.
All right, so we'll see everyone August twelfth at five PM?
Bring, bring a five gallon bucket of Flex Seal with you, we can save it.
All right, council comments. Jim, have you got anything for council comments tonight? Nothing? Jason, have you got anything? Jason, have you got anything?
Yes, ma'am. A couple of things, of course, we always want activities and events that, uh, just promote a lot of goodwill in our community. And we had the K-Love, uh, people here in town at the bark. That was a great event. I got a picture with them, of course. But what a great opportunity for a lot of people. Uh, I saw so many people I knew and of course other people had lots of friends and family there as well. So what a great event in our community. That was really good and uplifting. Uh, and to have a national recording artist composer there was really neat, too. The night to unite was really cool tonight. I was in the cities coming back, so I didn't get as much time there as I'd like. But, uh, had a, it was really, uh, really cool how everything was laid out. A lot of people were really enjoying the whole event as it was obvious. And, uh, just, I love stuff like that, uh, where we can, uh, have a time to have different kinds of conversations and, and just get to know people on a little bit deeper level. So, uh, glad for everyone who was able to be there and, uh, we'll, uh, look forward to more events.
Thank you, Jason. Do you have anything for council comments, Dennis?
No, I haven't.
No, okay. Jenny, do you have anything for council comments?
Um, yeah, I guess just the main thing is thank you to, um, everybody that came out tonight to unite tonight. I feel like it was a big success, um, having them move up to the community center. We had a lot more space. We could spread out. And it was just, you know, I felt like it was a big success, um, and the Pack the Bus fundraiser. We're gonna go through unpacking the bus tomorrow and counting and tallying up. But it seemed like there was a lot of people and a lot of donations. But I, you know, the main thing, coming together as a community, I feel like there's a lot of people, um, coming together and, you know, talking, having conversations, and that was what the whole night was about. Um, and coming out and meeting people, getting together as a community. And then also just, you know, reaching out and thanking our law enforcement, our fire, our ambulance. You know, just all our helping professions, um, and getting to know them and having the community connect with them and giving them a big thank you. I think all of them, especially recently, in our community, have been through a lot. And just our, our community as a whole has been through a lot, um, just with crisis and, and things happening. So I think reaching out as a community and coming together and coming together just for those emergency people too because you gotta know that, um, you know, they feel, they have feelings too when they have to go through these crises and they have to deal with that. That, that's a lot on them too. So thank you for all of you for coming together and recognizing and supporting our helping professionals too. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. You got anything, Scott?
Yeah, excuse me, I just want to say, uh, again, for Terry Glenn, for the years of service he's put on here and, and all of our staff from the, from the Steve Nasbys to the police departments, to Donnas, to our EDA director, to John, the street department, to everybody that works on, and he has anything to do with the city. We have a lovely community here and yes, we hurt. When we, one hurts, we all hurt. And if we can get out and just touch base with our neighbors and, and our friends and people, just so we can get to know each other and we got a camaraderie with each other, so we just, with what goes down, then we all cling together and we do a good job of that. But I just want to say thank you for all the people that help us do this kind of stuff because in this world, in this day and age, we need to be together because without togetherness, we have nothing. And I believe we have something very beautiful here. And I, I want to say thank you for everybody who touches that and has something to do with that. And I appreciate everything that everybody does here. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Um, I do just want to reiterate what was said about night to unite. I was there too and I saw, I think mostly, everybody here and up there. And it was great. That community center parking lot was packed. I only got a spot because someone was leaving as I was coming. I know events like that are a lot of work and I know you've had a lot into it, so thank you, Jenny and, um, everyone involved. It was really great to see everyone there and lots of friendly faces. We didn't eat any of the food, but it smelled good and I just would have, but didn't have time, so it was great. I think the location change was really good, too. Lots of nice shade trees, great facility there at the community center to use for anything, but especially this. So it was really good, really good there. Many thanks to everyone. I also wanted to bring up, I don't know if this is quite the time, but I got another call from Poet today who is offering VTO hours like they did when they helped us clean up the branches. So I just thought that was really neat that, um, businesses do reach out and they want to help and they want to work with the city. So I did make a couple of phone calls to see what kind of project we could put them on. But department heads, if you have any ideas, let me know. And if you are a business or organization that wants to offer VTO hours, we'll find a project for you, hopefully with, I guess, approval. And I think that is all I have for this evening, so we will adjourn the meeting by unanimous consent.